I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance. We have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public... As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We're very pleased that you've taken time this evening to join us. We're very proud of this school district and we thank you for your interest and support of our students. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. We'll begin this evening as we always do with the pledges of allegiance to the Texas flag, American flag, and our moment of silence leading us today. Our students from Cypress Grove Intermediate School and Oakwood Intermediate School. And here to introduce their students are the principals of those two schools, Kelly DeGeer and Josh Simek. Ms. DeGeer.
Thank you. We have Shelby Hesse, who's an office aide and she serves as a life skills buddy. You can tell her has a great heart. Outside of school, you play volleyball, right? And then we have Recorey Smith, who you can tell is in our Avid program. He's a wonderful young man, a great leader, and he loves football. But tonight, with the help of his father, he decided to represent us here instead of playing our football.
All right.
Here with us tonight from Oakwood Intermediate School, we have Freda Lizwardi. Freda's saying Emily made riding more popular at Oakwood this year. She entered a Veterans KFW Hall riding contest and she won and made my very $200 check to school. So she immediately became very popular. She's also in our Avid program and she's one of our leaders on campus. Tina Wright, Porter Garner, which may be the first time I've ever called him Porter. I know him as Quattro. Quattro's a huge ACCU fan, he's a huge sports fan. He missed 7-on-7 practice tonight. I'm not very popular with him at the moment. We really appreciate him being here with us tonight.
(Inaudible) 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 of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, you're standing for the moment of silence.
The Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible.
I'm gonna take picture before.
If you're gonna miss football, you gotta at least catch it. (Laughter)
Dr. Yoken, we have two recognitions tonight for the board. The first is All-State Band. Musicians Thomas Tex Bonacera from A&M Consolidated High School and Braden Yasco from College Station High School were recently selected to perform with the Texas Music Educators Association, TMEA All-State Band. Bonacera and Yasco were chosen for this prestigious honor through a competitive process held this year across the state at district, region, and area levels. Only the top 3% of musicians who initially auditioned become all-state musicians. Approximately 1,600 students are selected to perform in one of the 15 all-state ensembles, band, orchestra, and choirs. The All-State Band will perform at the TMEA State Clinic and Convention at the Henry B. Gonzalez Convention Center in San Antonio, or they did on February 13, 2016. So our first honoree is Tex Bonacera. And Braden Yasco. We also have their two directors here. So from A&M Consolidated High School, Band Director Peter Deploy. And from College Station High School, Band Director Eric Eats. Parents, come on up and take pictures. If you are a parent, grandparent, relative, raise your hand. Congratulations. All right. Samantha, you wanna do one with the board?
(Inaudible)
Thursday before spring break, March 10th, was a big day in College Station ISD because on that day, Oakwood Intermediate School was selected as a national demonstration campus by Avid, the advancement via individual determination. You'll hear a lot about Avid this evening, folks. Oakwood was selected through an application process screening and a thorough review that included a site visit, which was concluded that Thursday. Oakwood is the first fifth and sixth grade campus in the nation to be recognized for this distinction. Avid will be promoting Oakwood as an example for other visits to district to observe the implementation of college readiness skills campus-wide. This is a great honor for Oakwood and we'd like to recognize the staff in attendance today for their tireless work over the last two years to bring this recognition, recognition of their school and our district. So we would like for them to come forward. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
As we're getting resettled, I'd like to recognize the district artists that we have each month displayed in the artwork. And today, this month of March, is a National Youth Art Month to celebrate visual arts for grades K through 12. Youth Art Month emphasizes the value of art education for all children. Our program. The art this month is brought to us by College Hills Elementary, Oakwood Intermediate, who we have heard a lot about today. And CSISD has art programs that we're very proud of and obviously we have a lot of talent within our school district. And we want to be sure and thank the art teachers on your campuses for the education that they're providing the students and we enjoy the artwork that we see every month. So thank you for that. We will move to the consent agenda. The items that are on consent are G, J3, J4, J5, J6. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull off?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Any ones in favor of approving that consent agenda? To say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All as opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. We'll move to E1, Board Reports. Does anyone on the board have anything they'd like to share with the rest of the group?
Yesterday, on the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, Dr. Ely and Mr. Martindale and myself attended that meeting. Texas A&M did a presentation on a master plan. It wasn't a master plan as a master plan, but it was more of a plan how they're going to implement and create the master plan. And then last evening, me and Madam Secretary had the privilege to attend the Junior Leadership BRAS's graduation ceremony at the Hilton. And there were 34 juniors from...
In attendance.
In attendance. And it was, it's always a very moving thing to...
Lot of CSISD students.
Lot of CSISD.
Good, thank you. Any else?
Yes, ma'am. The Education Foundation, we took the month off from 50 men who could cook. Look at a few other things. They just announced the honorees for this year's Hall of Fame. 58 students will be honored in, is it in May? Is it May, Teresa? April, end of April, it will be the banquet. And also scholarships for graduating seniors, there are going to be 45 of them totaling over 47,000. Applications, they are now open and can be downloaded from the Education Foundation's website.
Do you have a date?
April 27.
Ms. Horn, we be sure that that's on our... Thank you. Anything else?
That is all. DEIC did not meet last month or this month.
Anybody else? So Quinn's not here today, but I had an opportunity to meet with the regional case manager for Head Start. You know, they come and visit the school district once a year and so I did have an opportunity to talk about all the great things that we're doing within Head Start and College Station ISD. And I think that that went very well, so that was today. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. I will follow up on something Mr. Nugent said talking about the senior scholarships. I see there are some seniors in the room because I know you're government students and we appreciate you being here. The website is give2kids.csisd.org if you have not looked that up yet. Give2kids@csisd.org. You have no excuse now. Download the application and apply for these scholarships. Do want to talk just briefly about some of the things that are going on in the district. We had another big presentation or I guess an announcement right before spring break. Kelly DeGeer was named Principal of Intermediate School Number Three. She'll be moving over from Cypress Grove Intermediate School. And so we have now a position that has been posted for the Principal of Cypress Grove Intermediate School and we'll be working to fill. We posted that on the Friday before spring break. And come to think of it, we've, at some point, we've got to start, stop calling this school Intermediate School Number Three. We've got to come up with a name and we'll be probably banning some names around and we'll be bringing a name to y'all here pretty shortly. Avid, we talked about the Avid Demonstration Campus and recognized all the staff members a few minutes ago. It really is a big deal and we look forward to tonight to Dr. Ramirez, who will be coming before us here in a few minutes to talk about Avid. And she will have some other folks with her to talk about the great work that's going on, not only in Oakwood but all across the district and the impact it's having on students' lives. So we really appreciate her and Tammy and Dalton and everybody for being here to do that. Last thing I wanted to talk about is we've got company coming to town in the end of April. April 22nd and 23rd, College Station ISD and College Station High School will play host to a regional Special Olympics competition. So for two straight days, we'll have about 400 athletes and their families coming to College Station, spending those two days and competing at College Station High School. It's an honor for us to be able to host these athletes, young and old, and we're excited for them coming and showing off our community to the folks from around the state. So please mark that on your calendar. It's April 23rd and April 24th. And with that, that's my report for this evening.
Ms. Horn, do we have any hearing of... Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. All right, so we will move to H1 and receive a report on Avid, advancement via individual determination.
So, good evening and thank you for having us here today. Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. And basically, some of you may be asking, what does Avid do? Well, Avid trains educators to use proven practices in order to prepare students for success, not only in high school but in college and in their careers, especially those students that are traditionally underrepresented in higher education. So the way it does this is it teaches the students skills and behaviors for academic success. It provides intensive support with tutorials and very strong student-teacher relationships. It also creates very positive peer groups for these students and develops a sense of hope for personal achievement gained through the work and determination that they do. Avid's mission has been considered to be an essential strategy for closing the achievement gap for many individuals, making college accessible and success for a lot of students. So what are the major activities of Avid? Well, they use, their lessons focus on the WICHER strategies, which are writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. Another big part is weekly tutorials, but they're not just regular tutorials. They're tutorials that use the inquiry method where students come with what they call their tutorial forms and they come with questions. They tell the tutors what they understand and what they need to, what they don't understand. So they're not just normal tutorial sessions. Students are also, students in Avid are also encouraged to enroll in rigorous courses. Actually, encouraged is an understatement. They are enrolled in advanced rigorous courses and many of them, they feel too challenged and this is a struggle, but that is a big goal for Avid. The other major activity that we have in Avid is that we provide summer school and the summer bridge program. And what's unique is that we coordinate these two programs to be on the same campus for incoming seventh and eighth graders, which this summer will be at CSMS. Avid students will be enrolled in summer courses, the typical summer courses in the morning, with opportunity to stay in the afternoon for what we call the summer Avid Bridge Program. That program helps incoming seventh graders get ready for the advanced math courses and it'll help incoming eighth graders get advanced for algebra or get ready for Algebra I. So the coordination of those programs is something unique to Avid and we work really hard to make that happen. Two things that happened this year that are really big celebrations are that Consolidated had the first college night where their junior class contacted, I can't tell you how many universities, but a lot of universities, and seven of them actually showed up on March 8th, 9th, and they had a big college night at Consol. The seven universities set up a little booth. The students were able to go around, ask about their, what are their acceptance requirements? What is their application process? What kind of financial help do they have? And they were able to interact with seven universities, actual representatives, and they had a lot of information from other universities. So that's something that was new this year and it was all coordinated by the Avid students. Another celebration is that College Station High School applied for an educational foundation grant and they were granted money for what they call a college cafe. That's set up at College Station High School in their Avid classroom. And it's a very casual social area with a couch and computers where students come in and they're able to help each other apply for FAFSA. They work on ACT and SAT prep stuff. So it's a very friendly atmosphere for these students and it's a college readiness environment. Another thing that Avid does every year is what they call Mission Possible. And this is a huge celebration at the end of the year where all the schools come together and the younger students get to hear about the older students' acceptance to their colleges and what choices they've made. And the difference this year is that they've extended the celebrations to the lower grade students. So our younger students are going to get to share some of their celebrations this year along with the high school seniors. So right now, the data that we have on Avid is that we do have elective classes in sixth through 12th grade. We currently have 21 sections with serving 333 students in CSISD. Out of the 333 students, 98 of those students, which is 59% of them, are enrolled in those advanced courses. And that's a huge celebration. So another process, in order to continue in the Avid process, you have to be certified. You have to be considered an Avid-certified campus. And in order to do that, there are 11 essentials that you are scored on. There are two times when you do the scoring. One of them is in the fall and that's the initial self-study that they call and that's the campus site team and the campus coordinator. And then in the, in the spring, as campus co-directors, Tammy and I get to go out and do the final certification where we check the 11 essentials and make sure that we have evidence of all of them being done. If we find evidence at a level of one or higher, then the campus continues to be certified as an Avid-certified campus. If some of them fall below that, then we have a lot, we have work to do. But basically, the levels are zero, no Avid evidence whatsoever, to three, which is institutionalized Avid practices across the district, or I'm sorry, across the campus. So we talked about Oakwood and their celebration of becoming a demonstration school. And I wanted to share with you what that process looks like briefly because we are constantly working on that at every campus. Like every campus's goal is to move towards that recognized status. So in order to be considered a recognized campus, the campus must score a Level 2 or higher on all 11 essentials for at least two years in a row. And then after you've achieved that for two years in a row, then you apply and you ask for an Avid divisional staff member to come in and it takes a two-year coaching process. So they come in and throughout the two years, they're doing site visits, they're making sure that we are really truly rating ourselves correctly on the 11 essentials. Then the Avid divisional staff member makes a recommendation for the campus to go ahead and apply for the demonstration status. And then the big site visit that Oakwood just experienced, which is truly intense because they're looking at every little piece of evidence to see what, you know, are you using Avid strategies? And I want to take a minute to comment that the thing that kept standing out at Oakwood that the demonstration validation team kept telling us or telling me was the level of questioning that the kids were using in collaborative groups was blowing them away. They were like, the questions the kids ask each other to advance their learning was incredible. So that's a huge celebration for the district because that's something we're doing across the district. So what are some of our challenges? Student recruitment is a big challenge in the, we're very female-heavy in Avid. We don't have that many male participants. So the, right now, all the campuses are recruiting for more Avid students and we do have an emphasis on trying to recruit more male students. The student enrollment in advanced classes, like I said, those courses are hard and a lot of students rather not take the hard course. So getting the students enrolled in those courses is a challenge. Scheduling is a challenge because we're limited on the amount of, or the electives that, sections that we have for Avid. So scheduling with other electives gets a little complicated. And then staff training and Avid strategies. We had the opportunity to go to Summer Institute every summer, but that's a limited amount of teachers that we're able to take. So keeping staff trained is a challenge. But our goals, we do have, the goal is to increase the student enrollment, which would definitely be the male students. Develop campus-wide Avid practices. Implement Avid this coming summer. College Hills Elementary is going to be joining us at Summer Institute where they're going to bring the Avid model into third and fourth grade. So they're going to be joining us this year. And then more college nights. And at the bottom, it's increase parental involvement. That is one thing that the Avid coordinators have been talking a lot about. We need to increase more parental involvement. And our plan for that is to use feeder patterns because as a sixth grader is only at Oakwood one year and, or at Cypress one year and then they move on to the next campus, it's hard for the parents to get to know the Avid strategy. So we're trying to create feeder-pattern parent involvement opportunities where we get together and introduce them to the whole range of ages and teachers. So what I'd like to do next, instead of opening up for comments and questions at this time, I'd like to introduce Dalton Cupfer. He is a senior at Consol. He joined Avid in sixth grade at Cypress and he would like to share his Avid experience with you guys. Dalton?
Before I read the speech I prepared, I would like to say thank you for allowing me to share it. Avid has been a very fundamental program for me. For those of you that know me, I am a theater student through and through, but Avid was actually the very first program I was enrolled in and I am very happy that I was able to take part in it. And this is a speech I actually wrote for a scholarship when given the prompt, "How has Avid helped you?" "A Thasagoraphobia, or the fear of being forgotten. Two friends enter the sixth grade, me and Richie. While Richie enters the school's choir class, I was selected to join an experimental college preparatory program known as Avid. While Richie learned how to use his diaphragm to project his voice to an audience, I was learning how to use a three-ring binder to keep papers in every part of my backpack except the rings." Let's fast forward a bit. Richie and I remained friends through middle school, still in our respective programs. He learned how to enrich his voice, I learned how to enrich my planner. Everything seemed fine. Obviously, one sounds a little bit more fun than the other, but I knew going in that Avid was more of a long-run beneficial program. However, upon entering high school, Richie wasn't, was going down the beaten path. His monthly use of prescription drugs became a weekly and daily usage. He began asking me to do it with him as well as drink booze and late-night parties, but that wasn't for me. But the thing was, I often have trouble telling people no. However, Avid was there to help me. You see, I couldn't go out to any parties because I had a TRF to fill out. I couldn't go to his house because I had a college field trip the next day to prepare for. I felt bad for Richie. His grades were dropping, his attendance as well. And finally, I stopped seeing him around campus. I would ask anyone if they knew how he was doing and people would confess that they'd forgotten all about him. It was confessions like this that triggered my fear of being forgotten. If I stopped showing up to school, would people forget me? Would anyone remember all that I had done for the school? This changed one day when the school, when A&M Consolidated High School put on a Day of Kindness. Each student was encouraged to put a piece of paper on their back and other people were encouraged to write compliments and their general feelings about the person on that piece of paper. My ninth and 10th grade Avid teacher, Ms. Kimmy Daly, wrote me a message that I will never forget. "You're an amazing student, Dalton. Never forget your worth to yourself and those around you. I've gathered many pieces of advice from teachers throughout my years, but none ever stuck with me like hers. I was sad when she moved on to another school, but I know she was helping even more students just like me." My attitude about the program changed completely that year. In fact, by the time my senior year approached, I'd come a long way from hiding stacks of papers around the room to avoid failing binder checks. I can now proudly say my binder is organized, my planner is full, and my five-year plan is all but complete. This year, I took a trip with other seniors to the University of North Texas where I fell in love with the town and the campus. It was then I realized college was a real opportunity for me. I can say with 100% confidence that it, had it not been for Avid, the chance of me going to college would be half as much as it is now. Recently, I received a phone call from an old friend I'd almost forgotten about. Turns out, while I was, while I was filling out housing applications, he was under house arrest. It was safe to say that he had fallen through the cracks. It really had me thinking. It could have easily have been me going down the same path. It could have been me throwing my life away with bad choices and worse situations, except I had something to keep me on the straight and narrow. I had something to keep me on the straight and narrow. I was too busy getting community service hours, or writing college essay after college essay, or simply perfecting weeks' worth of notes the day before they were due. I had too many commitments to goof off. At first, that's what I didn't like about Avid. Little did I know it was the key factor in putting me where I am today. Now I have been accepted into three different colleges that range from Corpus Christi to Denton, Texas. I have applied to more scholarships than I can count and have received amazing feedback. The week before spring break, I opened a letter from the University of North Texas that informed me that for the next four years, my tuition as, as a full-time student would be paid in full. I've gone from college being... I've gone from college being a mere hope to being forced to choose which one I would like to attend. The opportunities that have presented themselves to me are all thanks to four words: advancement via individual determination. Avid has pushed me through my entire school career to be the best student I can be. And finally, I am here speaking to all of you about the program that not only changed my life, but gave me a chance to pave my way for the future of my own making. Thank you.
I, I can't do anything more to close. The only comment is Dalton is one of 10 CSISD seniors in the Avid program that have already been accepted to one or multiple universities with scholarship opportunities. So that's what's Avid, that is what Avid has done for CSISD. Do y'all have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Who wants to follow Dalton?
Really not in my best interest, but I, I would just say congratulations to you guys. You know, even before I'd gotten involved with the board, you guys were known as a standout program, and I'd heard a lot about you, and I've come to appreciate you more over the couple of years that I've been on the board. But you are an integral part of what we do at CSISD, and if people aren't telling you every day that you guys are doing a great job, they should be. So I know we say it tonight to you. So thank you.
Can I say one thing? I'm gonna cry through it. I appreciate the fact that we have a student sitting in front of us that understands hard work and that it pays off. And you know what? You have something that a lot of adults don't even know, and you have been given something that is really, truly going to serve you well the rest of your life. And you all have that, not only for college, but the rest of his life, that he will be successful because of what he learned in Avid.
Okay. Before we have more tears, thank you very much. The only thing I would ask is that Dalton, when you decide where you're going to go, let somebody know so that we know. Okay. All right. Not near as fun, but it's important.
Oh, yeah.
Best introduction yet.
When they're done?
And you're going to sign that they get credit for their government class, right?
Absolutely.
Mr. Martindale?
Next on the agenda, I believe, Dr. Yocan, is consideration of approval of administrator contracts. Each year, administrators with two or more years' experience, administrative experience in College Station ISD are eligible for a one-year extension on their current two-year contract. That would extend those current contracts to June 30th of 2018. Also, any first-year administrators in College Station High School that are, excuse me, College Station ISD, it's their fault, are eligible to move to a two-year contract that would begin July 1st, 2016, and extend through June 30th of 2018. It is recommendation that the College Station ISD Board of Trustees approve the extension and issue of administrative contracts as presented and recommended by our superintendent of schools.
Any question? Do you have a motion?
Move just presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the administrator contract, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Well done.
This is, this is going crooked very fast.
Oh, well, then we're going to let you do J1.
That will do, yeah.
Consideration and possible action with respect to a resolution for the approval of the assignment and assumption of a contract to purchase real property, including the post-closing performance of the obligation for demolition, trash removal, and remediation services for such real property, and approval of a grazing lease on such, on such property. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yocan. As, as everybody in this room knows, we're a growing district. We're adding campuses. And to add campuses, you need to have places to put them. The last couple bond issues, we put money aside, and the voters have allowed us to put that money aside to purchase land for additional facilities. Tonight, we have action before you to assume a contract for a piece of land of approximately 40 acres in size, east of the bypass. And to, to give more information on that, we have Mr. Martindale and Mr. Gentry, should you have any questions of a legal nature. Mr. Martindale?
Absolutely. Dr. Yocan and board members, we have the opportunity to purchase 40.93 acres off Sylvester Road, which is located east of Highway 6. The price on that 40.93 acres is a little over $2.3 million, which is well within, well within the market value for that location, and calculates out to $1.29 per square foot. 40.93 acres provides us flexibility in what facilities or school levels we might, would consider at this location in the future. We could fit an elementary, an intermediate, or a middle school on this sized property. Currently, the district does not have any property east of Highway 6 that we would, could consider for the location of any future campuses, so that's a definite positive for this consideration. This current site has great traffic accessibility in place now, not to mention that there's currently construction to connect Emerald Forest Parkway with Sylvester Road as well, so that will only enhance that positive for us. We did have a feasibility study completed that showed that all utilities are currently available at this site. That's a definite positive as well. We had an environmental assessment study, which came back positive. However, their recommendation was there is some household debris-type items, an old dilapidated house that is, is beginning to fall. Their recommendation was to have those items removed from the property. The cost for the removal of those items is included in the, the asking price that we have before us at this time. Mr. Gentry and I are happy to answer any questions regarding this property. I think it's an absolute positive and winner for CSISD to have the opportunity to acquire 40 acres on the east side of Highway 6 with utilities right there and available for us.
Any discussion?
I move we approve the attached resolution for the approval of the assignment and assumption of the real estate contract, including the post-closing obligations and the attached grazing lease.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Just disappointed here. Didn't state it out.
Thank you. We'll move to J2 and receive, unfortunately, this is an unfortunate, investment report for the quarter ending February 29th, 2016. Do you want to go back and change the order?
This may bring you to tears as well. I know this is an item that Dr. Wesson and Mr. Harris have been waiting on all evening, so we'll progress through this as efficiently as possible. As required by the Public Funds Investment Act, also known as Chapter 2256 of the Government Code, we're to provide a quarterly report to the board and superintendent. Also required is that investment officers for their district are current with training, and that all investment, investments are made with the driving principles of preservation, of principal liquidity and yield. And the district is in compliance and moving appropriately with all those particular items that are required of the Public Funds Investment Act. If you look a little closer to the second quarter, you will see that the initial values in November the 30th were $71.7 million. The ending totals were $184.3 million. That's a net, net change of a positive of $112.6 million. If you look a little bit closer to the line items, you get a better sense of where those changes occurred. Our general fund had an increase in value of $40.4 million, going from an initial value of $27.1 to $67.6. This increase in value had to do with property tax collection on our M&amp;O tax rate of $1.4. You also see considerable change in our debt service fund, again, an increase of $11.3 million. This increase is the same reason for the general fund collection of property taxes on our INS tax rate of $0.32. One new line item indeed account for a significant amount of increase. This second quarter of revenue was our, 2015, our first sale, or of the initial 50% of our 2015 construction bonds. If you recall, we had those sales on February the 10th, and took possession of that money on February 25th. Those sales were for $67.95 million. The difference in that, in the $66.4 million that you see before you, is we reimbursed the general fund for the preliminary work on Intermediate School III, if the board recalls, passed the resolution in the fall to reimburse the general fund. So that's why you see the difference in the $66.4 million and the $67.95. Done with the magical numbers that you've all been waiting for this evening. I do have a challenge toward Dr. Ely that if we do get beyond 1% on our interest rates, our yield on our interest rates, I'll challenge him to dance off. So who knows? We'll see. But still, very, he didn't think that was funny.
Second.
It's just because I feel, I feel, it's just because I feel fairly confident we're not going to get to 1%, but I could be wrong. Each of these rates from last quarter to this quarter have gone up a couple of base points. Tech Point Lone Star, we're both running about 0.1%. BBNT has always been our strongest at 0.6. So we have had a slight increase in each of those rates this second quarter. I do like to put it on a graphic, and if you really work the values on the Y-axis, it looks like we're making a lot more than, than we really are. It makes those percentages really stand out at you. That is, that is the end of our, our quarterly report. I'd be happy to fill in any questions from the board. Just reminds to report, only I don't know what formal action is required.
There was a miracle this week, so maybe there'd be another. We could see some dancing.
I'd like to say your, your presentation met all my expectations, so.
It exceeded mine.
We're going to move to K1. Consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price, the total project budget authorizing, authorization for me of the superintendent and his designee to execute necessary documents associated there with, and the authorization to proceed with the work associated with the renovations and additions to Oakwood Intermediate and A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Yocan. Mr. Hall, Executive Director for Facilities, could not be here this evening. He is celebrating the birth of his first grandchild in Washington, DC. So we're excited for him. But in his stead is the very capable hands of Theo Rouse, our coordinator for construction. Mr. Rouse will come forward and talk about our latest guaranteed maximum price, and this is for a couple of the projects that were identified in the 2015 bond election, specifically for Oakwood Intermediate School and A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. There are some renovations and additions there, plus some, some deferred maintenance that will be going as a part of this project. With details on that, that's Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Dr. Ely. Dr. Yocan and members of the board, it is my pleasure to present the project consisting of Oakwood and AMCMS additions and renovations for your consideration and approval this evening. These projects stem from work identified in the bond that was passed in November 2015. The agenda item is to approve the guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, and total project budget for the Oakwood Facade and Locker Room addition at AMCMS. The GMP is based on estimated costs derived by Pepper Lawson Construction. It is based on drawings and specifications which have been developed by VLK Architects. The GMP, which is now proposed for your approval, is an amount of $4,617,320. A summary of the total proposed budget is also listed for your information along with our GMP. We have listed all of the additional costs to be picked up by the district for a total proposed project budget of $5,492,898. And so it is recommended that the Board of Trustees of the College Station Independent School District consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price of $4,617,320 from Pepper Lawson Construction, and the total project budget in the amount of $5,492,898 for the construction of the Oakwood and AMCMS addition and renovations project. It is further recommended that the superintendent or his designee be authorized to sign any necessary documents to implement the guaranteed maximum price, and that the Board of Trustees authorizes the commencement of the work associated with this project. With that said, I'd be willing to answer any questions about the project you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? We have a motion.
I make the motion that we approve it as stated and presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye. All those opposed? So the motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. Government, students, thank you very much for joining us. And...